Good evening.
At this time, City Council Hamlet is open for business. Welcome everyone being here tonight. Our first item of business is invocation which will be given to us tonight by Reverend John Jackson. Reverend Jackson, thank you for coming tonight.
Let us pray. By heaven and father, as we have John here tonight, first of all, I want to say thank you. I thank you father for another day. I thank you father for how you looked upon us last night while we slumbered, slept. While we laid at the point of death. And lord, you woke us early this morning and you gave us new mercy to be able to go through this day, father. And as we went through this day, father, you didn't allow the enemy to wipe us out. And god, I want to thank you for that on this day. I thank you father because you told us in your word for us to pray, father, lead us. And father, as we, as I pray tonight for the leaders of Hamlet, I pray god that you said in your word that every step, if we acknowledged you in all our way, you would direct our paths. So I'm asking you tonight, father, as they make the decision on tonight, father, for the people of Hamlet, lord god, I'm praying that they will focus toward you, lord. They will allow you to speak to their hearts and their minds, father, in every area that they've moved in this, in this meeting tonight, lord god. And I just want to welcome your holy spirit to come rain with us this afternoon in, in the name of Jesus. And father, again, I just want to thank you for this opportunity because all, all the preachers in Richmond County, they could have called anybody. But lord, they chose to call me and I, I, I don't take that lightly, but I show you gratitude. And I thank you again for this board. I pray that you continue to bless this board, continue to bless the Hamlet, continue to let Hamlet grow, father, to become one of the greatest city in the state of North Carolina. We pray and ask you this night in the powerful name of Jesus, and in Jesus' precious name, I do pray that the body of Christ save, amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Jackson. Counsel, you have before you at this time the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or changes or deletions that need to be made at this time? Mr. Blanton, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And regards to the property on Hamlet Avenue, the bidding process ended last week. And if council would like to consider that, that would be under old business.
Okay, that would be under item seven A.
That will be fine if that's agreed with council, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Madam clerk, is that all right? Okay, camp council, is there anything else that needs to be changed or added, deleted? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to approve the addition of seven A.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. At this time, we reach that portion of our agenda where we allow anyone who has anything that they need to bring before council tonight that is not on the agenda. If there is, then at this time, we'd ask that you come forward and present whatever you have. Okay, if not, we'll close the comments. This time, council, you have before you the minutes from last regular session. There were no closed session minutes. Ask you at this time, motion to adopt?
I move to approve.
Have a motion to adopt? Need a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion or changes? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. Item number six, under old business. Consideration of contract for Raleigh and Charlotte Street. This is a section down there that has been a mess and we needed for it to be cleaned up, to get it cleaned up. And in order to do that, we have reached a contract with the Seaboard Railroad who owns that property. Counsel, what are your wishes on that?
Um, before we do that, I, I don't see any need to recuse myself of this. That is nothing, there's nothing for me.
I don't think you have any kind of sense of official conduct, which I think you're fine.
Yeah, thank you. I so move to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Have a second? Any further comments?
Just have one question. Why are we, why are we wanting to enter into a contract to clean up someone else's property?
Councilman McQueen, this is a five-year agreement which gives us the option to spray the weeds, to cut the grass and maintain the property. So the agreement would be good for five years for us to clean that particular portion of land behind BBNT. Given that we stay, I believe it's fifty feet out of the railroad right of way. So it's more so an option. We're, we're under no obligation to keep it clean, more so is we have the option to go on that land without having any type of liability.
Yeah, but my, I guess my question is, why wouldn't they be responsible for doing it?
I can take, they're, they're only gonna clear and clean what's in the area of that train coming through. And the area in question is outside of that area where, so they, they're not gonna come through and clean it.
And this is the area that we cleaned up before with, without the permission?
That's correct. Yes, council.
Yeah, they're not.
I'm not in favor of us spending money to do that, but I mean, if we're gonna do it, we definitely need to have this agreement.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion. And did I get a second? Got a second, okay. No further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. Item number seven A, that's in reference to the piece of property down on Hamlet Avenue. Where are we? Okay. Oh, okay. And we added that other one there. Let's go to item seven first. Item number seven, ordinance number twenty seventeen dash oh eight banning compression brakes. Uh, this matter was discussed during the October meeting and the attorney has given us a copy of ordinance. And council, I would ask that for your consideration on that at this time.
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance as it's written, but I'd like to state, I did talk to a truck driver for over, that had been driving for over thirty years. And he told me, explained about the compression brakes, how it works and one thing and another. And he said that there's absolutely no need for any truck driver coming into Hamlet from any direction to use compression brakes. Uh, so this would, should not affect any truck driver as far as how he drives his truck. It's only for emergency. And if there was an emergency, they might have to use their compression brakes. But most, mostly, compression brakes are used for hilly areas such as mountains. And he said there was no reason for any truck driver other than an emergency to use compression brakes coming through Hamlet.
And just to add to that, Mr. Martin, that's the way the ordinance has been written, that using the brakes are prohibited within the city limits except in the case of emergency.
Right, that's why I make the motion that we accept the ordinance as it's written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Actually, I do have some, uh, where, where are we at? Because I, I just don't see this being policed. And just in my opinion, because it's, it's just hard to sit there and listen for that to happen when it's happening. Where are we at with the resolution to the state to back the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit sign up?
Excuse me, and that, that will be with the DOT and also look at signage. I believe that LRB has done something similar here recently where they have signage coming in and out of the prohibited area. So it would be a conversation to have with the DOT to permit those signs once this, uh, once this resolution or ordinance is passed. To send to the state to say the city of Hamlet has undertaken these particular actions. And request, if we wanted to throw in also moving the speed limit back and requesting that signage for that particular area. But policing would be the responsibility of, of the city.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make this comment because I'm familiar with it. Uh, as far as changing the speed limit thirty-five miles an hour, they are under general statute constraints as to how much the area is built up before they can make it a thirty-five zone.
Uh, this is already a thirty-five. My question is, is if we took it back one hundred yards.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The area's got to have a certain amount of buildup before they'll do it.
Well, I'd consider it a residential area.
I mean, we can ask, we can ask them and they'll come check it.
I mean, we're talking one hundred yards. I mean, that would at least, because where it's at now, if you go there, it's right at the entrance into a residential area.
That's right.
And so if we could get it, yeah, even if it's fifty yards, I mean, it's still gonna put it, um, further away from that, that, the street entering, uh, the Pinecroft area. Where we could hopefully, um, because we got, uh, and chiefs of where, we got much bigger fish to fry than sitting there and listening for people coming through. This is great, but I just wish.
All right, we could ask, on that particular matter, we could ask the manager if he would to send a letter to DOT asking about that and have him come survey it.
I'd be glad to, and I'll provide a copy of the ordinance.
Have the right counsel consensus?
It's not greedy. If we can just get it back, just, just in, you know, a little bit more.
Okay.
And thank you.
Anyway, we're on this, uh, yeah. Is that all you had on the compression brake?
Yes, sir. Second.
All right, I've got a, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. All right, thank you. Now we'll get to item seven A. We had the cart before the horse there. Uh, this has to do with the property on, uh, Hamlet Avenue that was a vacant lot and we put it out for bid and, Mr. Blanton, I'll let you elaborate.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. In September, council agreed to move forward with selling a piece of property that was on Hamlet Avenue. And we received one bid after the bidding process closed for three thousand dollars and it's from Mr. Tim Nevenger. That is the only bid that we received during the bid opening time, so that bid is before council, for council's consideration as to whether to accept Mr. Nevenger's bid of three thousand dollars.
So I move to approve to accept, uh, Mr. Nevenger's bid for that.
Got a motion, have a second. Ms. Masagie, is there any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. Next item of business is ordinance number twenty seventeen oh nine to amend the sign ordinance for city of Hamlet and consistency statement. Uh, several changes from the NC general statutes have required revision of sign ordinance. Uh, Mr. Blanton or Mr. Morpheus?
I'll let Mr. Morpheus speak to this.
And Gail, please jump in if, uh, miss anything. In addition to statutory changes, the US Supreme Court a few years ago issued a ruling in a case called Reed v. Town of Gilbert where they basically said the way nearly every municipality in the country regulates signs is being done incorrectly. Um, including the way it was done here in the Fourth Circuit, which is here in North Carolina. Um, so we have drafted an ordinance that addresses these concerns. And we've tried to keep the ordinance as much like our current ordinance as possible. There are some changes. Um, I came down and went through the changes in detail with the planning board and took their advice and worked with Gail and we, we've made a number of revisions. Um, at this point, I'm happy to either answer specific questions, go through the ordinance or say nothing further and, um, let you, uh, let you consider it. Just let me know what you'd like to do.
Is it gonna make, is this gonna make any kind of major change in the way we do business with our signage or I? Ms. Strickland?
Not particularly. I think the major change probably is in temporary signs.
Uh huh.
Uh, we'll have much more scrutiny with that or in some cases less scrutiny with that depending on what it is. We can no longer, uh, have content based as it is. Uh, but we, like I said, the planning board went through it line by line with TC, uh, made several recommendations, trying to be vague at all. But at the same time, having to follow guidelines that are set for us that we have to follow.
And just to add to that, um, Ms. Strickland's exactly right. The, the case basically said you can't regulate on the basis of content except in, um, really significant situations like, uh, like traffic signs, obviously those aren't gonna change. But, um, when you talk about temporary signs, you're talking about everything from political signs to, you know, Al's mowing service kind of thing. And we had to stop regulating based on content. So now there's just sort of a standard number of temporary signs anybody can have in their yard and things like that. Another fairly significant change is that, um, our current ordinance only allows governmental flags and we have to open that up to, you know, any kind of flag. So there's a lot of things like that, but the amount of signs that, uh, space that a business gets hasn't really changed. So things like that have it, but there are some, some other changes like that.
Is it gonna affect any of the existing businesses and their signs now?
No, and, and there's two reasons for that. Number one, the, the substantive standards haven't changed. And two, we're not, um, requiring that any existing signs be phased out. So if you've got a sign and it becomes illegal under this ordinance, it's just a lawful non-conforming sign at that point. Um, I guess one other change is, and this is really common provision in, uh, local ordinances, is there's a provision that says if a business goes out of business, you have to take down the sign. Well, it's content based, so we've taken that out and I don't, I don't know that's gonna make a big difference, but again, that's one of those kind of changes.
Um, maybe a dumb question, but to the effect of like, uh, signs telling us about the Seaboard Festival and things like.
They're temporary signs, they would be permitted, um, they're permitted for a certain amount of time. They are required to note by the city management, they're required to have a log of how, how long, so that temporary signs cannot stay up for a certain period. So, um, things that really have been done in practice, they will continue, um, so I, I don't see that affecting.
Same as political campaigning signs, the same? Just a certain amount of time?
They set sixty days for temporary signs and then, um, so many weeks out of the year.
And I know, I don't know if it matters as much in Hamlet, but in some jurisdictions, it's kind of a big deal because NC DOT sets rules for political signs along their rights away.
Right.
And that's set by state statutes, so even though it's content based, you know, we leave that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, a few months ago, you all adopted an ordinance that allowed signage for a hospital. And I know it's not an issue right now, but Gail and I were actually talking about this yesterday. Where, the, the, the current version leaves that in, um, in the event that a hospital comes back. And that's one of those compelling governmental interests, you know, you need to be able to get to the hospital and see it. So we, we thought that that was okay, even though it's content based.
Okay.
What effect is this gonna have on Mr. Shelley, the collared man? He uses temporary signs.
I was reading his article today. He said someone had removed his signs that were in the right of way, but those would have been in state right of way, so I.
Yeah, we didn't have anything to do with that.
Yeah, he's only doing that a certain period of time out of the year anyway, so he would probably be okay.
Well, like I said, that's state right of way that he's in there for.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Does that also include this, uh, consistency statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. All right. Next item of business is a rezoning petition. Petition is from Angela Mackey. And, uh, this was taken before the, uh, board and they recommended that it be allowed. As if someone here with the Mackey family tonight, would you like to come up and tell us about what, what's going on with that property? State your name, please ma'am.
Angela Mackey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having me tonight. Um, I purchased the land from Mr. Thurman Green a few years ago and the land was basically for my dad, um, to garden on. And right now, my dad's health is not well, um, and some of you may know him, he's Leggie Chavis. And I have, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Did y'all hear what I said?
I, yeah.
Thank you. Um, anyway, we purchased the land for my dad to garden on and he's not able to garden anymore. And I would like to have it rezoned for residential because I have a buyer, uh, that can purchase the land. If my dad would help me out tremendously, um, as far as financially helping my dad out and everything. So that is what I'm proposing. If y'all could, uh, please consider to rezonate the property to residential.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Ms. Mackey? If not? Okay. This time, uh, anybody else got comments on it? If not, thank you. Uh, this time we'll close the public hearing on it and consideration of the Mackey rezoning request and consistency statement. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I move to approve. I don't see any issues with.
Okay, I got a motion to approve. I have a second from, uh, Council Ma- Masagie. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. Ms. Mackey, that's taken care of.
And that's for the consistency as well, so.
Yeah, I see. Okay, next item of business is, uh, opening public hearing number three on Huerta rezoning. Is there someone here tonight that would like to speak on Huerta? Please come forward and state your name and I think we're pretty much familiar with what you're doing, but please tell us.
Uh, my name is Ruben Huerta and I'm proposing a rezoning, um, the West Hamlet Avenue. A building there for old administration.
Okay. We noticed that you've already got some progress going on it too, so that's, we're well pleased with that. Uh, council, you have any questions for Mr. Huerta?
Uh, Ruben, I'm, I'm glad, uh, happy with what you're doing. Obviously from a personal level of knowing you a long time, if I can do anything to help you outside of this, let me know. Certainly appreciate it.
We're just extremely pleased to have you want to put your business in Hamlet. Anybody else got anything for Mr. Huerta? Is there anyone else out there tonight's got any comments? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing. You have a seat. Item number twelve is a consideration of Huerta rezoning request and the consistency statement. Counsel, what are your wishes?
So I move to approve.
A motion to approve. Got a second from Council McQueen. Okay, any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Very good, thank you. And that's taken care of. Thank you. Item number thirteen is adoption of budget amendments. You'll have two copies in front of you. One of them is, uh, general fund and the other one is the enterprise fund. Uh, you have any questions? Our finance officer is here.
I don't see anything. Just nobody has any questions, so I move to approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second? Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Also have before you tonight from Ms. Turner, the, uh, tax releases and refunds. What are your wishes on that?
So I move to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Need a second?
A second.
Have a second? Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you, council. Okay, the, uh, next item of business to come up was a discussion on activities at Seaboard Festival. At the time, the Seaboard Festival occurred, it was noted by a number of people, myself included, that there was some, uh, it's a nine, five oh one C three nonprofit and that there was some, uh, political action going on at that time during it. And that's something we've never had before and it did not look good for the citizens of Hamlet. And, uh, so I brought that up for a discussion tonight. I was hoping, is there someone here tonight from the, uh, Seaboard Festival Committee? I was hoping that somebody would be here tonight to discuss this with us and we just need to, I think we're gonna need to come to an understanding. It's not something that city of Hamlet wants. We don't want it, we don't want to do it, but we do want it to be done right. Uh, comments from council?
I don't think you're gonna find anybody here tonight to talk about it. Um, I, I, my biggest issue with it, and I was a little bit upset about how it was done, um, and that the city manager has always in, in the past introduced and, and, uh, the mayor, uh, to everyone at the Seaboard Festival for the grand opening. Um, it didn't bother him, but it certainly bothered me that one of the Seaboard Festival people got up and, and welcomed and introduced the mayor wearing, uh, full gear of, of, um, campaigning stuff. I just think that was, uh, especially, he was on the agenda to do it. I think it was a, just the most disrespectful thing, um, that could have been done because while the Seaboard Festival Committee puts this stuff on, it's done in the city of Hamlet and it's done on our streets and it's done by our businesses down here. Uh, and I, I don't know why it was done that way. He was standing there, uh, waiting on, uh, his part to come up and, and introduce, uh, you to everyone and, and do the, the formal opening, um, and, and it, it was just not done. I don't know why. Can't ask for a while, but I didn't like that, so. I'm like you, I don't want to see anything, um, we're not trying to hurt the, the, the committee. Um, but we, we do, this, this campaign, and just, just to kind of back up here. This campaign is by far out of the, the, I, I would say, I've been serving now six years, but I ran two years prior to that. This was one of the worst campaigns I ever seen in my life. Um, just some of the manipulations, the lies, the, it, it was ridiculous. Uh, you know, and, and I, it, it's just how it was done, everything, how it was done, how it was said. Just so many things that went on. Anybody can support who they want to support, but just, just do it in a right, fair manner. Tell your platform, don't tell what another councilman's doing or another person is doing. Because personally, I don't care. Like, and, and when I look at it, somebody running, what are you gonna do for the city of Hamlet? What are you gonna do for the sixty-seven plus people, a hundred plus people we have here? What are you gonna do for them? I don't really care what Mr. McQueen did. I don't really care what Ms. Maskey did. I want to know what you're gonna do. And, and there was just a lot of, um, and it's still, it's, we're finally starting to kind of get it settled back down. But we have a city to run and we have people to serve. And it, I'm telling you, it's just.
Let's get back to the Seaboard Festival.
That's what it's about. That's what it's about.
Anyway, uh, I wanted to say this, and I don't have any problem with the way the Seaboard Festival ran. It ran perfect, did a fantastic job. Had a lot of people on the street, didn't have any problems out there, don't have any problems at all, but, uh, we do have to come to some kind of an understanding.
Let me say this.
With the Seaboard Committee.
The Seaboard Festival Committee is still, comes under the five oh one C three designation. And they are a tax-free, uh, organization. And a five oh one C three organization is absolutely forbidden to directly or indirectly participate in any political campaign on behalf of or in opposition to any candidate for elective public office. Violation of this prohibition could lead to IRS to completely revoke the organization's tax-free status. Now, we're not asking for that to happen. There's three things the IRS can do. Give you a warning, fine you, or remove your tax exempt status. We would hope that the IRS would only issue a warning. We're not after the, the Seaboard losing their, their tax-free exempt status. That's not the point. We just want to prevent this from happening ever again.
I would, I would just like to add to that. First of all, mayor, I'd just like to thank you for, you taking a, a stand on doing the right thing at the festival. And I talked to you that morning and you were as upset as just about anybody else and thank you for that. It, it goes even deeper than just the folks that were on the street, uh, as part of the five oh one C three Seaboard Festival Committee campaigning. Shortly before, um, I'm not sure exactly what date, I think it was like within the past couple of months, uh, the Seaboard Festival Committee actually added another member on to the, uh, Seaboard Festival Committee. Um, and that member, um, was the actual candidate that was actually running for office. And that candidate, while being on that committee during their only really function of the year, and their biggest function of the year was actively campaigning. Um, not to mention, uh, Councilman Lindsay was there, he's on the committee, or at least a volunteer, I think Councilman Maskey, uh, there as a volunteer. Um, and several other people on the Seaboard Festival Committee actually had. um, and several other people on the Seaboard Festival Committee actually had shirts on, hats, buttons, and things of that nature, and it's, it's, it's a slippery slope, especially when, um, the Lindsey's graciously offered to match dollar for dollar, uh, any funds up to ten thousand dollars, uh, and I think one of the things in the paper, um, if I correctly remembered it, was that it would be a tax write-off if you, if you donated it. The reckless behavior of that committee during that action, uh, of that event could lead to serious repercussions for them and anybody that has donated any money to, um, to that, um, to that group. So it goes farther than just the ones on the street that day, it was, in my opinion, it was a premeditated attempt to allow a candidate for a public office to use that, um, five oh one C three to actively campaign.
Well, the Seaboard, the Seaboard Festival Committee has a rich history in Hamlet, it's been going on for, uh, what is it, thirty-five years now? And, uh, the people that have been on that committee have, for the ninety-nine percent of them, I, nothing partisan about them at all. I've worked with most of them, uh, we were on the committee for about five years, and, uh, it just, it just went wonderful, and we don't know where, you know, where this thing went off to, off the track. But, uh, my guess, my recommendation was that maybe we could get IRS to send them just a notice to cease and desist in the future, that would be my request, council, so.
Oh, I'll take that request.
Is a motion in order?
Yes, a motion's in order.
All right, based on the, on the comments by the Mayor, uh, Bayless concerning the violation of the Seaboard Festival Committee regarding their five oh one C three status, on October twenty-eighth, ten, twenty seventeen, I would like to make this motion.
Excuse me, I think I need to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
On advice of council.
Okay.
The city?
Yes, we will allow that.
Have to get the lawyer to let us know if that's the option that you have, and then we have to actually do it.
As I understand it, um, there's an allegation that Ms. Maskey was campaigning during the Seaboard Festival. Um, also the allegation is that that is considered to be part of the Seaboard Festival Committee, um, ma'am?
I volunteered for fourteen hours down there wearing a hat.
I, I think that your request to be excused is appropriate. Um, and I know that there's a motion on the floor, and no one's asked me, so I won't offer my opinion about whether the city needs to pursue this or that should be pursued individually, but that is another question that could be asked. Um, but I don't want to interrupt, specifically to Ms. Maskey's question, I think it's appropriate to ask to be recused.
Do I need to leave?
Uh, no, ma'am.
No.
Uh, yeah, continue.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute, listen, I think he had, I think he had another comment about this, and, uh, go ahead with your comment.
Well, and, and again, I apologize for interrupting Mr. Martin. Um, I, I think the questions that have been raised are substantive, and I've never been to the Seaboard Festival, I haven't had that good fortune, um, I know it's been going on for years, and it sounds like there were activities that happened this year that have not happened before. Um, I think if individuals want to make an inquiry to the IRS, that certainly seems appropriate. I have no opinion on whether the five oh one C three statute has been violated or not. Um, I guess my question would be, and it's truly a question is, is this something that the city of Hamlet needs to pursue? Um, as has been pointed out, it's on city streets, certainly, I think the city is very proud to have the festival, but the Seaboard Committee is not, um, it's not a committee of City Hall, you know, it's not like the Depot or, um, some other committee like that. There weren't city funds involved.
Right.
So, that's my only question. I'm not questioning the concerns that have been raised, but just whether the city needs to be pursuing this or not, and I'll leave that to council's discretion.
May I finish my motion?
Yes, sir.
As I said before, I make a motion that the city council instruct our city manager to draft a letter to the IRS and Secretary of State to formally report this violation, and then, and then and after their investigation, it is determined that a five oh one C violation was, has occurred. This council is asking the R, IRS to issue a warning and not remove the tax-exempt status from the Seaboard Festival Committee. That's my motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on it? If not, all in favor?
I mean, o- other than, the, other than the fact is, is this is, this has been done in the past, but to, to the extent it was taken this year was more or less reckless. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't one, uh, volunteer or one member, two members. It was about three-quarters of the volunteers, as well as the, the individuals that oversee and are named on the five oh one C three. I guess that's first, kind of how you word that, 'cause there's, I guess, individual people that are involved in, in the five oh one C three. So there's just more or less, like I said, I have seen this in the past, and it's been done, um, but to, not to this extent, so, I mean, go ahead, motion, second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, okay. Very good. Next item of business is allowance of alcohol during the chambers after hours in Hamlet. Uh, we had that a couple of years ago, and generally what they do is they have a, a wine tasting, and we just wanted to make sure that, uh, this was gonna be something that was okay with the cha- with the, uh, council before they have it. And I, what was the date she gave us yesterday?
It's gonna be December the fourteenth, and Rick's Catering out of Laurinburg is going to be catering the event. All of the food and alcohol will go through them, and it will be, uh, the Christmas after hours at the museum.
Given by the chairman. Council, what are your wishes on that?
So move to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve.
No, a second.
Okay, have a second. Any further discussion on it?
Just like to add that this is part of the, um, reevaluation of how we do things, and it was determined that we didn't have a policy in place for years, and uh, there had been, um, alcohol consumed at the location, um, for years, and this is something that was corrected, and this is just following um, our protocol that we set like a month or, month or two ago, so, just wanted to throw that in.
Okay. Any further? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Next item up is discussion items for Mr. McQueen, requests for attorney overview or current form of government.
Yeah, I, i- if you would, and I haven't spoken to you about this, but I, if you would just maybe address council the way our government is set up, how the, the board operates, um, specifically how the board operates as a group, um, and not as an, an, an individual, um, anything that you could say, um, to that, I would appreciate it, and I'm sure you had seen this, and...
Uh, yes, sir, I'm, I'm happy to give a brief overview, and then through any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them, so. Hamlet operates like many towns, actually probably most towns its size, as a council manager form of government. What that means is that you have a, uh, professional manager who is an employee of the city, who is, uh, directed and empowered to, uh, act as essentially the CEO of the city. He operates and runs all day-to-day operations. Um, the council acts, uh, the best analogy would be like the Board of Directors of the corporation, you set the policy of the city, you adopt legislation like rezoning changes, um, approve major contracts, you certainly can hire and fire the manager and the city attorney. Um, with regard to day-to-day operations, however, i- as a general rule, council's supposed to be hands-off. Um, so, while certainly you can speak with city employees, it's not council's place to direct their actions, 'cause then they have a conflict whether they're answering to council or to the manager, it should be to the manager. Likewise, uh, you shouldn't have a role in disciplinary actions. Um, the other thing that I think is important is that while your views are important, um, and you're certainly welcome to speak on behalf of the city when you're authorized to do so, you act as a body, so no one of you is more important than the other, and nobody, um, has special privileges simply because you've been elected and sit on the dais. Um, your privileges come from the people of Hamlet, and you have to act as a body to do them. And when the city, uh, council has made a decision, then no one person, um, has any sort of special authority, uh, other than what the council's directed. So, that's, uh, I think a pretty simple overview, but again, I'm happy to drill down on anything more specific, Mr. McQueen.
Just, the, the main thing is individual council members should not be in, uh, should not come and try to direct employees on their own.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to get out of it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, going to the next one, fine?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, this is something that came up a couple of months ago, it was on the agenda last month, and after consideration, I didn't want anybody to think it was like a political stunt to try to, uh, garner votes or anything along that line, I put it back on this time. Um, it has been my view, and my view only, that, uh, the issue involving the playground equipment and the grant that the city applied for, uh, it's been my contention that I feel like that Councilman Lindsey had a conflict of interest in that, and should have, uh, at least told the council, uh, his, um, his role in attempting to donate some property, um, and, uh, by that same token, uh, him and his family trying to get a grant for that, um, piece of property to improve it, to actually donate it. Um, and the same grant that the city council was voting on, um, he voted against it. And I know he made a statement that he voted against it because it was tied up in the total overall motion of persons, purchasing the playground equipment. That being said, um, it's something that could have easily been, um, changed up from, from one motion to two. So, I would like, and here again, this is my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, I'm not a, a, a scholar at the school of government by any means. I think it's something that we need to look at, or, or at least get, uh, someone to look into. At this point, I'd just like to make a motion that the city, um, contact the UNC School of Government, specifically, uh, Norma Houston, I think she's the one that handles, uh, these types of situations, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Professor Houston or Professor Blue Sting?
E- either one of those two, just to see if, um, there was, uh, a conflict there. Of course, a conflict is nothing more than just a conflict, it's not a violation of the law, it's not anything like that, there's nothing along those lines. Um, they say there's not, there's not, they say there is, then we know we need to look at that in the future when some of these things come up before. That's my motion there.
I th- think we really need a motion, just consensus on that.
Um, y- you could do it either way, sir.
Just to consensus and have the manager, have the manager or Mr. Moore.
Just to answer the question, because the question has been raised, and it was raised by me, and, yeah, I'm not saying I'm right or wrong, I just wanna get a final answer.
Is that okay with you, council? Okay. I'm just, yeah, go ahead.
I thought we just got to talk about we were supposed to act as one.
That's why I brought it to the board and made a motion for everybody to vote on.
Now, my understanding is that in the grant process, just because one gets a grant doesn't mean the other, good could get it.
Right, it had nothing to do with that, it had, it had nothing to do with the competing grants.
Competing grants.
Right, I understand, it has nothing to do with that. Just a financial, a financial gain that could have been, um, and I, it's my contention that by voting against the city's grant, that cuts down some of the possible, um, competition to get that grant. That's, that's my contention, and, uh, they may say that I'm not...
But we applied for the grant.
Yeah, we applied for the grant.
Vote one, we applied for the grant.
We applied for the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, just, y'all, whichever of you wants to do it, check on that and let us know something on it.
I don't think we have a consensus yet.
Is anybody against it?
I'm against it, I...
Okay.
I don't see what it would hurt just to ask a question to get an answer, and...
Vote lost, so I don't see where it matters, I guess that's my point.
Well, it's, well, it doesn't matter if the vote loses or not, if you have a conflict.
Just give me the motion.
Make a, I just, I gave you the motion.
All right, I got the motion to ask them to check on it. Uh, need a second, I got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. And oppose likewise, okay. Three, one. Takes care of that.
All right.
Uh, Jacksonville project.
The last thing, the last, um, the last city council meeting, the council voted four to one to allow the Railroad Museum, the city-run Railroad Museum, to, um, go forward with the Jacksonville project, actually allow, uh, individuals in the group to bring, I, I'm not, I don't know if it's a, the engine or a boxcar or something, to bring it here and display it.
I thought we agreed to just, the motion was to talk to them about it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah. That was what the motion was. My concern was, and actually this should have been tied into the very first thing that I had the, um, attorney give us a, a talk to about. Um, I, four to one vote to allow them to look into doing it, not to actually do it, um...
There were several issues, including, uh, whether the property down there was large enough for it to accept it and...
Absolutely.
...the money and how it's gonna be moved and all that, we wanted them to come back to us with...
Yeah, absolutely, it's, my understanding that after the vote, the next morning, the Councilman Lindsey that voted a- against that, um, was at City Hall and, um, some talk was discussed to try to slow down the process, um, until the new council, to after the election, um, and the new council was seated and moved forward, and...
One question on that, is that a fact?
Were you part of that conversation?
Maybe.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to read an email, the email that I sent to council that day, in the interest of being accurate with the facts. Uh, this was on October eleventh, I sent an email to council, actually forwarded an email to council from the Jacks, uh, from the Depot Board, they were voicing their excitement and appreciation for council's consideration in the Jacksonville project. And in my email, I wrote that Councilman Lindsey and Gail and Tammy discussed, uh, Councilman Lindsey, Gail, Tammy, and I discussed the issue of the placement of the Jacksonville, as well as where the city's property lines are, and I've been discussing the possibility of having Public Works measure the boundary line from the center of the railroad property to the property line, which was one of Mr. Lindsey's concerns, as well as locates for utilities under the ground. Tammy has reached out to the DOT for earlier surveys conducted, and Gail has been researching the issue of the property lines throughout today. I will be glad to stop the Depot Board from, uh, proceeding with discussions of the acquisition of the project if council so desires, and research further the issue with the Depot Board. If needed, I can instruct the Depot Board to postpone discussion until such time that council can verify such property lines and sizes at the November city council meeting. And that's the end of the email, and since that time, locates have been done, um, verifying that there are no issues with lines underground, is my understanding, down at the, uh, where the Depot Board wishes to place the Jacksonville.
So, the, the whole gist of this is in fact, the only thing that was is Mr. Lindsey's, the council one just asked questions about it. He didn't direct anybody to try to stop the project or anything. Am I, is that correct?
I can only say that Councilman Lindsey did come in here the morning after. He asked Mrs. Strickland to look into an issue of the placement of lines, uh, Mrs. Kirkley, to look into, uh, some other issues with the DOT and earlier things, um, earlier things that had been done, is, um, regardless of...
He didn't ask you to stop the project.
He instructed to do something.
He came in and he had asked Mrs. Strickland to look into something, Mrs. Kirkland, and they brought me into it.
Citizen could have walked in and asked that same thing.
No, there's a difference in asking and instructing.
Well, that's what I meant.
And that's what we're going back to, that's what he's trying to say is, is we voted on something the night before to allow them to, 'cause I think we, we kinda had them wanting to, them to do it, 'cause it's their project, and I don't think we wanted to really spend a lot of our money or our people doing it.
That was our understanding.
Yeah.
The whole purpose of me bringing that up ties into the form of the government that, that we operate on, no one council member has any greater power than the other, and we have no power individually, only as a board. And that's all I have on that.
Okay. Okay, item number sixteen, mayoral proclamation, National Hospice Palliative Care Month. Let me find all my paperwork here. Now, I believe we have some representatives here with us tonight from Richmond County Hospice, and, uh, you are...
My name is Krista Pfeifer, and I'm the development outreach coordinator with Richmond County Hospital.
Okay, and I'm going to read this mayoral proclamation. Whereas hospice and palliative care empower people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones, despite serious and life-limiting illness. And whereas hospice and palliative care bring patients and family caregivers the highest quality of care, delivered by an interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals that provides, uh, that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, spiritual care providers, and others who make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. And whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully and make more meaningful moments until the end, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas each year hospice saves Medicare more than two billion in providing solutions for physicians, care to patients, and comfort to families anywhere and at any time. And whereas every year, more than one point five million Americans living with life-limiting illness in their families received care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. And whereas more than four hundred thousand trained volunteers contribute... And whereas more than four hundred thousand trained volunteers contribute nineteen million hours of service to hospice programs annually. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Bill Bayless, by virtue of the authority vested in me, the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November of twenty seventeen as National Hospice Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, and to observe this month with the appropriate activities and programs. In witness thereof, I have under, here under set my hand this fourteenth day of November twenty seventeen, and cause the seal to be affixed, Mayor Bill Bayless. Do you have any activities going on this month of-
Um, we do, we, um, typically celebrate all of our, um, like, nursing week and all that, we kinda combine it with the hospice month. Um, we also will be having, um, our Live Life, um, River Tree, uh, November thirtieth, and that's open to any, um, resident in Richmond County who, of course, took home and make memory of, um, anybody they've lost. Um, it's just a nice remember ceremony, um, Christmas time, we'll be at the lighting and all of that.
And that's on November-
November thirtieth.
At what time?
Six P M.
Okay. And I believe also, uh, this month you've had a, uh, program for veterans too, haven't you?
Did, um, our veterans program, it was on November third, um, and we had a ceremony honoring, um, the veterans. It was free for them, and we had a dinner service, uh, we had the military band there, some demonstrations, I K two. Um, so it was a very nice time for them to come out and just show our gratitude for their service.
Thank you for what you do for Richmond County, thank you for coming tonight. Uh, next item of business is, uh, mayoral proclamation, Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Uh, I was proud to have represented the city of Hamlet at a memorial service that was held earlier this month at the Cole Auditorium, and to also read a mo, uh, proclamation from, uh, the governor. Whereas Alzheimer's is a progressive degenerative disease that affects over five million people in the United States and their families. And whereas Alzheimer's disease causes deterioration of memory and thinking and erodes judgment and reasoning abilities, it also affects behavior, emotions and the ability to care for oneself. And whereas there is no cure for Alzheimer's disease, and whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer is the sixth leading cause of death of our American adults, and the fifth leading cause of death in adults age sixty-five and older. And whereas the city of Hamlet joins individuals, families, friends and caregivers dealing with the effects of Alzheimer's disease and promoting research to find a cause and cure, and in supporting educational programs and support services. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November twenty seventeen as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, and commend its observance to all citizens. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand this fourteenth day of November twenty seventeen, and cause this seal to be affixed. I would like to say that I, the, we appreciate the folks down at the senior center who help put this on every year. And we're also at the same, along the same lines, we need to keep in mind everyone who either is or has been a caregiver for an Alzheimer patient. Next item of business, under other business, item number eighteen is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a few items for council and the public tonight. Uh, first, the city of Hamlet is disappointed in the circumstances surrounding former fire chief David Knight and his alleged involvement with the mishandling of funds from Hamlet Rescue and Emergency Medical Services. The Hamlet Rescue and Emergency Medical Services is a separate nonprofit co- corporation of which Mr. Knight was the president of, and there are no allegations that any city funds were mishandled by Mr. Knight during his tenure as fire chief, nor is the city a part of this legal action. Although the city is disheartened at the possibility of past financial mismanagement, the city is confident that necessary changes and safeguards are built into place that will allow for a mutually beneficial relationship to continue between the city and the Hamlet Rescue and Emergency Medical Services as we strive to deliver the best possible services and protection to our citizens. Next, the demolition is complete at the corner of Monroe Avenue and one seventy-seven. Certainly to appreciate council's, uh, agreeance with this issue and staff's hard work on making sure that this project came into fruition. Next, regular basketball registration is currently underway through December first for thirty-five dollars per child, and late registration through December twelfth for forty-five dollars per child. There are several events coming up in the next few weeks that, uh, the city is excited about and looking forward to. The Christmas parade will be Thursday, December seventh, please contact City Hall if anyone is interested in float or any type of self-registration for the event. The Christmas tree lining will be on November twenty-seventh at five-thirtieth, the main street park. Old Fashioned Christmas will also be on December eighth and December ninth. The city offices will be closed on November twenty-third and twenty-fourth for the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, in regards to garbage pickup for that day, there will be a delay in residential garbage pickup on the twenty-third? Okay, so, people who receive their garbage picked up on Thursday will have their garbage picked up the, uh, Wednesday prior. Also, uh, the city, uh, city offices will be closed that day, as I said, and they will also be closed at three P M on December seventh for the Christmas parade, and between the hours of eleven forty-five through two P M on December the eighth for the employee Christmas luncheon. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions for the city manager? Okay, if not, we'll move along to item nineteen, comments of council, we'll start with Mr. McQueen.
Yeah, uh, just like to, of course, thank, uh, Jonathan, Mr. Blanton for, you know, all you do for the city. Um, especially over the past couple of months, it's been kinda busy, and you've, you've really done a great job for us. Um, just a couple of things, where do we stand on the light pole painting around on Hamlet Avenue? Is that something that's been on the, our radar? I was over there.
With Duke Energy?
Yeah.
They have been, um, there's been a conversation that's been going on with Duke Energy for, uh, several years now, going back to the, uh, prior manager. I'm under, the understanding that it is on their list, I've reached out to them directly several times. Uh, we've actually reached out to Senator McGinnis about that, uh, a few months ago, and the only answer that I can give you is the answer that I've been getting, and that it's on their, it's on their list and that they're attempting to get to it as quickly as possible.
Yeah, they look horrible, I mean, I'm sure there's other places that they look bad too, but I know a lot of folks over there's really did a good job in that area and, um-
And I'll be glad to renew the city's continued interest with Duke Energy, on that, there are several contacts, I'll make sure.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't let up on that. Um, the, the next thing, and this is just, um, something that I just wanna bring, um, to the attention, it's nothing that I wanna try to act on now or whatever, but our dog ordinance, um, over the course of the past couple of months, I've had several people contact me, um, about some of the issues with our dog ordinance. There's been an issue, um, I'm not gonna call any names or anything like that, but a gentleman come to me and, um, some of the barking and, and the police chief making, um, answer some of this. Our ordinance is, is there some loophole or some reason that is not really enforceable in, in the state court or?
It's enforceable, I don't know why, I think it dismissed, we write verbatim, the language on the citation. Uh, we try to give warnings to the citizens first and give them a copy of the ordinance, but we write tickets and sometimes it's just like any other tickets, they get dismissed.
Yeah, um-
For what reason, I, I don't know.
I don't know if you're familiar with the one I'm talking about, but there's been several times, um, I mean, the person, these, these videos, uh, the dogs barking, just, it's more than just a nuisance, I mean, it's something that is, um, horrible, um-
We were just talking about the verbiage on that one, it was not right, but I, I don't know, um, it's something that would disappoint.
So that could have just been the, a, a simple-
Word.
Okay, alright.
On the citation.
Okay, so the, the actual language in our ordinance is correct?
Well, we can double check to make sure.
Is that something that we could maybe look with Mr. Morpheus about and, and just see? Is, this, this individual that is wits in, I mean, it's something that goes on, and, and you know, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, um- Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, something that needs to be looked into, um. Yes, sir.
I mean, um, just about the issue of enforceability with, with barking dogs, uh, are there other issues relating to the ordinance?
That, that's the only issue that he's brought up to me, um, and you know, we just had the situation with the dog and the fatality and, um, of course, that's not any, anything that, you know, legally that the city is-
Is there any way that the, the ordinance could be, they would be written a fine at the State Hall? Um, just going through the state court, I mean, I don't know.
The answer is, we could write it so it's not a criminal penalty, um-
Make it like a civil penalty.
Well, e- exactly, and it gets kinda complicated, it could be written where it's a civil penalty that goes to City Hall, but typically unless it's written in a certain way, uh, civil penalties go to the school system. I don't know that Hamlet cares, I mean, it's not a moneymaker, but it would be that, the idea being that's more enforceable because-
This guy just wants a dog to start barking where he can-
Let, let me talk with you Chief Waters, and I'll, I'll get up with you in the next few days and we'll, we'll talk about that, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. McQueen? Or did you have something to add?
I was, yeah, it was- Constant, I mean, I, I understand after nine that you can complain, it is my understanding, you can't say anything until after nine, but when a dog's bark all day long, you can't even go outside and enjoy your yard without somebody's yard dogs right in the backyard. You're, you know, the property behind you or the property right down over here with constant, oh, I mean, every three seconds, bark, 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 bark.
Where's this at?
To the north-southeast and west of our home. I mean, I mean, it, you-
Well, just, just for the record, I, I'm not talking about your situation, but I, I would encourage you to, uh, get with the chief and the city manager.
Is there a warning, I mean, is there a warning in there that you can stop a dog? I mean, can you complain about dogs barking all day long, or is it just after nine?
I've not seen the ordinance in a while, but I don't think there's a time restraint on that, but it's, it's something that we need to try to look at and try to get-
So I, I, I would encourage, that's a good-
Have you got that up, Mr. Morpheus? Okay, okay, we'll just stand by just a minute, there's gonna, attorney's gonna pull it up, see what we got. Temporarily, would, you got something else that you'd like to?
No, I would just, um, just to add to-
Let me see if he finds that, we'll get back to it then.
Yeah, um, I, I would just like to, to thank everyone that participated in, in the municipal elections. Um, honored and humbled to have, uh, been elected to my, going into my third term. Um, I really enjoy, um, being on this board and, and making a difference in Hamlet. Um, uh, wish more people would get out and vote. Um, I think we're probably less than ten percent of the registered voters that actually voted. So, for those that didn't get out and vote, I would encourage everybody to exercise their, their voice to vote. And for those that took the time to come out and, and vote, I, I appreciate it, no matter who you voted for, taking part in the government, um, is, is a right that everyone has. And I'd just like to thank everyone that came out and voted, other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, yes, sir.
And, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the manager for his lightning quick search skills. Um, yes, sir, so code of ordinance is section dash four thirty-seven, barking dogs. It shall be unlawful for any dog owner to keep or have within the city a dog that habitually or repeatedly barks in a manner or to an extent that it is a public nuisance, as defined in section four dash three four. So, there's not a, a, a time limit on that.
So you need to know what section point three four actually says before you can-
I can get with, well, and, and the police know how to enforce it, but I'm happy to show you the ordinances and get you a copy if you want.
Does he have to then see if it applies to section?
Um, well, they, they'd wanna make sure it meets our ordinance standards, sir, yes, sir.
All you would need to do would be to call the police department and make a complaint, the police would go out and handle that situation at that point. I don't think any of our noise ordinance is as restrictive by time, I don't think any of them are, I think it's just the noise. Um, but of course, I mean, here again, the police has got a lot to do, but that's, you know, if you can't sit on your porch or whatever for a twenty-four seven si- situation like that, um, I'm glad we're able to answer your question too, and this was, you don't live near Highland Avenue, do you?
Abby Covington lives across the street from the one, and I know that, you know, it goes all day long and all night and, and, uh, I live right next to the water tower where there, there's one tied up out back on a four-foot chain that goes all day and all night.
That's a violation in itself.
That's why it's barking.
Yeah.
All day and all night.
Need to check in on that one, Chief, 'cause that's a violation in itself.
Okay.
Mr. Martin?
Just, uh, reiterate what Councilman McQueen said. The same guy that's been talking to him about the dog problem, I'm sure it's the same guy that's talking to me. It's a ser- it's a serious problem, we're gonna have to do something about it. Other than that, um, I'd just like to thank the citizens of Hamlet for allowing me to serve another term on the Hamlet City Council. That's all, thank you. Okay, Ms. Messigee?
I was at the Veterans Day Parade in Rockingham, and appreciate the representation by the Legion, and our police chief was there, it's good to see you, it was a great parade.
That it, okay. Again, I, I'd just like to reiterate that it's great that everybody who came out and voted, that they did as their civic duty to come out and vote. I just wish more people had come out and voted, and, uh, if you figure that we got about seven thousand people all together in City of Hamlet, and we only saw, what, less than six hundred or so that vote, actually voted. Uh, but anyway, we just need to, we as citizens need to work on that. Uh, again, I really appreciate, uh, being able to serve the citizens of Hamlet. I enjoy getting out and visiting with people and talking to people about the citizens, about what a great city Hamlet is. I want to see us try to get more business, and I'm, I'm so glad to see where this move over here, I think they'll do wonderful. Uh, I'd like to congratulate everybody, of course, that got elected, and I would like to thank the people who ran and took the opportunity to get out and say, you know, I'd like to run and make a difference. So, it's always good to have people come out and run. Also, I would at this time ask Ms. Bernice Owens if she would to come up here and tell us what is gonna be going on on Hamlet Avenue for the, uh, Christmas, if you don't mind, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you're here tonight and- We do have, you know, we've got, we've got a split city, part of, part of our businesses are on Hamlet Avenue and part of them on Main Street, so, we-
I hope you can sound so they can hear me.
Pull it down just a little bit, there you go, we got you now.
Okay, um, our Old Fashioned Christmas is gonna be Friday, um, December the eighth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty. Uh, we will have the, uh, Singer Center, it's going to start us off with their two dances, and they do absolutely fantastic, and they have a very funny dance this year. If you went to, uh, the fair, you saw them, they're really, really good. Uh, also, uh, we're going to have, um, different ones will be singing, of course, and we will have, uh, Holly Littlefield of Bold Moose will be with us again, and also, we're going to have Elvis impersonator. Y'all are gonna, if I don't come and see him, it's gonna be good. Um, but we're going to have fun, and of course, you're going to be there, we want you to be there and, and, uh, start, start us with the, uh, welcoming everybody, um, that's always a, a good thing for you, Mayor Bailey, and we like that. Uh, but we have fun and, uh, we have, um, homemade hot chocolate. It's homemade, it's not stuffed in a jar or can, I make it, it's homemade. And we serve, um, hot chocolate cookies, the Harbor Store serves, uh, peanuts, the roasted peanuts. Fred's Barbershop does popcorn, um, and it's all free. Get hot chocolate and cookies for free, no money's involved, so, we're gonna have a good time.
And I understand that Fred's Barbershop is either expanding or already has?
Oh, you've got to go see Fred's Barbershop, it is absolutely gorgeous. I mean, that is a uptown barbershop.
That's the things we'd like to see in Hamlet.
I was in there today and I, I, I've got, it, it turned out beautiful.
It is, it is absolutely gorgeous, but now, uh, the other part where she had the barber shop, she has, uh, beauticians in there and also, uh, pedicure technician. So, we've got a lot of good things going on over on Hamlet Avenue.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Well, that's good, we're always glad to hear that. And we do appreciate all the businesses that stay here in Hamlet and, uh, work so hard to keep their businesses going in Hamlet. And we do offer, anything we can do to help, we'd like to.
And of course, I've done a little painting over there too, and you've got to come over and see the red wall. We have a red wall, and hopefully one day, we'll have, um, something on the red wall. Maybe we can get somebody to come over and paint like Jonathan.
Ah.
You want me to paint?
No, we had an artist on council.
You wanted to paint it back? You're gonna have to paint it back red when I get done.
Over and paint a train. If anybody paints, come over and paint on, on the wall. It's really nice.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate that, and, uh, I know, I know that, uh, Mr. Bill would've appreciated it too. That's great. And, uh, just hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving coming up, and, uh, again, don't forget the twenty-seventh at five-thirty down there at the depot, we're gonna have Christmas tree lighting. And.
Sorry, he skipped, he skipped me, but it's okay. I didn't have anything.
Excuse me, but what am I supposed to do?
I'll forgive him, 'cause he, there's a lot on this agenda tonight, so I'll forgive him.
A little levity never hurts.
It's Alzheimer's month.
Okay, and then, uh, December the seventh is, which is also Pearl Harbor Day, is the day we're gonna have the parade. And we do hope a whole lot of people will sign up to be in the parade this year. It's always, people enjoy it, and we're just so glad that we can do it and get it put on. And that will be all I'll have at this time. Uh, I would ask, at this time, for motion to go into closed session for general statute. One forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A three, for attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we skipped the mayor pro temp.
Oh, no, I don't have it.
Oh, we did, didn't we? Okay.
That's what I was talking junk to him about. I don't have anything.
Before we do this, go ahead.
I don't have one thing, unless you want me to talk. I mean, I can always talk.
Okay. This hasn't been, this hasn't been a good night for me. My sinuses are messed up bad. Uh, no. So, uh, anyway, going along for the attorney-client privilege, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Um.
Okay, oppose likewise. At this time, we have, uh, council has voted to return to open session. There were no decisions or votes made during the, uh, meeting. I would ask at this time for motion to adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you.